Call this meeting to order, and if anybody wants to who has not signed up, I only have three people who have signed in to speak at public comments. So give you a few more moments to sign in if you wish to and get it to Clerk Clark. So we can get you in public comments. So, welcome to this meeting. The City Council regularly scheduled meeting for October 20th will be conducted in traditional in-person format at here, and it's available on YouTube channel. However, public comments are only available in person and remote meeting access is for viewing purposes only. So, call this meeting to order and roll call, please.
Alderman Ashower?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovit?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
And Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
Very well, if you'd join me as you were able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the orders of the day, who are our Friends of the Fourth here? If you'd like to come up, please, and join me. Don't be shy, I know you're never shy any other day. Anybody involved with Friends of the Fourth, please come join me up here because this is very much about you. So what I have tonight is a proclamation in support of the Illinois America 250 and Warrenville Friends of the Fourth Anniversary Commemoration. So whereas the United States of America will commemorate its 250th anniversary on July 4, 2026, marking a historic milestone in our nation's history, and whereas on July 4, 1776, the Second Continental Congress formally adopted the Declaration of Independence, asserting our freedom from British rule and laying the foundation for the principles of democracy and self-governance, and whereas the U.S. Semi-Quincentennial Commission, known as the America 250 Commission, was established by Congress in 2016 to plan and orchestrate the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, aiming to engage all Americans in commemorating this historic event through educational initiatives, and whereas the Illinois America 250 Commission was established to develop, encourage, and execute an inclusive commemorative observation of the founding of the United States of America and Illinois, and Illinois' role in the nation's history, and whereas the Warrenville Friends of the Fourth Committee was established to plan and effectuate Independence Day activities in and for the city and citizens of Warrenville, to promote and encourage patriotism and to inspire the virtues of democracy, and whereas recognizing and supporting the Illinois America 250 Commission, as well as the Warrenville Friends of the Fourth Committee, will help ensure a meaningful and educational commemoration for all residents and future generations, and whereas the commemoration provides an opportunity to reflect on the state's historical significance, honor the achievements of its people, and inspire civic engagement, and whereas the city of Warrenville hereby formally supports the Illinois America 250 Commission, as well as the Warrenville Friends of the Fourth Committee and their efforts to commemorate our nation's 250th anniversary. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Andrew Johnson, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, DuPage County, Illinois, along with the City Council, express our support for the Illinois America 250 Commission, and encourage all Illinois communities to organize and participate in local events, including the Warrenville Friends of the Fourth Celebration, leading up to and culminating on July 4, 2026, to commemorate America's 250th anniversary. Congratulations and thank you very much, everybody, for being here at this group. So we're looking forward to fantastic 250.
Yes.
Anything to say as the Chair?
Volunteers, we made lots and lots of volunteers.
And we need.
You know how to use the microphone?
We need lots of people to join us, to have ideas, to make this a really spectacular celebration. So we need, we don't need now, we don't need muscle, we need people who are creative and can think of things that would help us make this a special time.
Very good. Thank you very much. And there will be certainly social media posts, I know from Friends of the Fourth, where you can click on and you'll be able to volunteer, certainly be able to donate funds to help the effort also. So, thanks again.
We always need money.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here, appreciate it. Give them a round of applause just for all they do for the Friends of the Fourth. So now we also have something a little bit special tonight. I'm sure many of you are, hopefully all of you are familiar with the pop-up market that is coming up to Leon Schmidt Park, and we have had, how many actual applicants come in that want to be pop-up market?
More than 25.
More than 25. Commercial enterprises that are in Illinois, or in, of course, Illinois, in Warrenville, applied to be a, one of the first of the pop-up market vendors. So what we're going to do right now, though, is pull the ones who will be the first two to get the, not a tent, but a structure, the shed, the shed unit on October 25th. And if anybody's here from these organizations, please stand up, I'll read your names so you can get some recognition. The Dandelion Atelier. Stand up, stay standing, I'm sorry. Hold your applause till the end, we got a bunch here. Sticky Noodles, anybody here from Sticky Noodles? Crow and Moon Enchantments? Amethyst Chop 81? Briarwood Beads? DM Design? Tallis Trinkets? And Boy Scouts of America, obviously, are hopefully represented somewhere. So I'm going to pull out two names for the two huts, or the two, the two structures that will be there for the weekend of October 25th, our first soft opening. So let's see, see who we get out. Got two here. DM Design is one of them. Congratulations. And the other is Dandelion Atelier. I imagine they get to arm wrestle over which side they. Next week on November 1st, the other opening is, oh my goodness, Chalk Couture Major Creations is one of the applicants. London Sky? Beta, excuse me, Bada Bling Crystals and Crystal Candles? The Craft Shack? Emma's Extensions? Clay Space? And Quickfire. Anybody here from those organizations? Well, that's okay, you don't need to be present to win. Sure they're watching on YouTube? So we have Bada Bling Crystals and Candles, that's one of them, and the other will be London Sky. So congratulations to everybody, and make sure you mark your calendars for October 25th from 1 to 4 at Leon Schmidt Park, and for November 1st from 9 to 1:00 p.m. at Leon Schmidt Park. So anything else to add? All right, we'll take it from there. All right, so now we have Citizens Comments, and Patricia Sinnet is first. And again, if we'd ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less, and everybody in the aisles, please be respectful of all the comments and all the folks who are coming to speak, and please no reactions to the comments being made because it really messes up with the production quality to those who may be watching from home. So Patricia.
Okay, good evening. I have more or less questions rather than comments, just things, oh, I'm sorry, there we go. So there are just a few things that I've been thinking about, and one of them being is I want to be certain that everyone is aware, I just drove by today, that there is a brand-new development of townhomes, luxury townhomes, being called Ed Dylan Mill Street, and it's a huge, huge development, it's Naperville, but it's literally, what, a half a mile away from where this new development is being proposed. Additionally, across the street on Deal Road, there's a property for sale, about 1.6 acres, that is also going to be developed, and I believe it's on Melcher Avenue, there's going to be a new development of single-family homes that are being developed. So there's a lot of new folks that are going to be coming into town, which is wonderful. I have no, and, and obviously, the one at Deal Road and Mill Street is, is in Naperville, but I was hoping the council had, certainly should be aware of this, and that they're aware of, there's going to be, I don't know, a couple thousand new residents, people in the area that will be looking for a grocery store, where they don't have to go all the way to Ogden to go to the Jewel there to get groceries. So there is the potential, as it exists right now, for a lot of new people looking for grocery stores. So I wanted to be sure that everyone was aware of that, and that, that is acknowledged by all the council, as well as the people on the Planning Commission. The other question I have is, why is this, there's a document that's missing, where is the covenant? There was a covenant, why isn't it in with regards to that area? Why isn't it in the documents online about the development? Why is the, I can only assume the covenant is being hidden, and I would really appreciate the city of Warrenville being forthright and bringing that covenant out and publishing it on the website, because.
30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
30 seconds.
Okay, I believe that everyone here should have, should believe that covenants are a matter of trust, and as a matter of trust, they should not be hidden. And I assume that all of you, many of you are married or have commitments of other types that are covenants, covenants are always to be honored. And then finally, who do you work for?
Time.
Okay, I just saw the, the company got to do a full presentation while we were just dismissed. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Steve Alice, and then Kevin Sinnet would be up after Steve.
Yeah, I'm Steve Alice. Excuse me. Live at 27W 554 Warrenville Road, so I live right across from the proposed Cantera Point Development. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Warrenville City Council. I'm here tonight to urge you to vote no on the Cantera Point Ordinance that's up for approval this evening. After reviewing the 19-page ordinance, I'm deeply concerned by the scope of the proposed variances, which disregard Warrenville's own city code and Cantera Development Control Regulations that are supposed to guide responsible growth in our community. Let me share a few of the most troubling details, and you'll see them on page four of the ordinance. First is the density, we've talked about this a lot, it's, it's an increase of 60%. Six units per acre is being increased to 9.64 in a very small area, and that's far beyond what our Cantera Code allows, sets a dangerous precedent for future developments. Second is the driveway setback, I don't understand this at all. It reduces the required 25-foot driveway setback to only five and a half feet, that's a third of the length of a car. That's unsafe, impractical, and inconsistent with our design standards. Third, we talked about trees last time. It cuts the required number of street trees from 83 to 73, removing 10 mature trees, trees that add a barrier for my adjacent neighborhood, and shade and beauty and environmental value along Warrenville Road. And fourth is the roof design, it eliminates the city's roof modulation and height design standards, allowing flat roof, three-story buildings that clash with Warrenville's small-town character and established aesthetic. So if enacted, this ordinance would approve an irresponsible 60% density increase, create unsafe, inadequate driveways, remove trees that contribute to Warrenville's charm and green canopy, it would allow boxy, high-density construction that doesn't fit the community we're all, we've all worked to build. Seeing this ordinance in writing and understanding how far it deviates from the Warrenville's own standards for responsible growth should concern every.
30 seconds.
Who cares about the future of this city. This project serves the interest of an owner and a buyer developer, not the residents who live here, especially the ones that live adjacent to this property and call Warrenville home. I urge you to stand with your constituents, the people who elected you to protect our neighborhoods, our safety, our shared quality of life, please vote no on the Cantera Point Ordinance tonight.
Time.
So that Warrenville stands for responsible, balanced growth, not reckless overdevelopment. Thank you.
Followed by Bob Seber?
Good evening, everyone. I, it's the 20th today, isn't it? 20th, 20th, yeah. The, that's, I want to write that down later because I think it's the first time my wife and I are going to agree with each other in public. The, so anyway, the, I should have asked our therapist to come. Anyway, this is very exciting for me. So I definitely am for growth, and I'm, find myself in an odd position, I'm against this development, I just think it's the wrong place for the development, one. It doesn't, it doesn't have a look and feel at Warrenville, it's at the entrance of our cities, I know people don't think in terms of, I think there's a reason it's called Point, I suspect that it's called Point because it's, it's a high-altitude area, it may have just been a marketing thing, but I suspect that it is because of that. And really, it just doesn't have the look and feel for that area, it's a commercial development at a time when there's great flux right now in our economy about what way we're going. There's an effort to build in America, I'm not suggesting it should be an automobile plant there, or a data center, but there are other things associated with executives, executive goals, wouldn't it be wonderful to have actual white-collar jobs in Warrenville? So I think that those are things that we ought to just pay attention to, I think it's the wrong time, I, I'm, I'm for sending it back to the commission to do some tweaking, and I think that, I think the council, we, we did not have 100% agreement on what to do last time either way, and I'm hoping a couple of people will slide, and, and out of the response that they've seen from this group, I've been to several meetings, more than I frankly like to come to, and I will have to say that I think there's been, there's been a lot of effort in the public to really oppose this, and I think, I think it's more because it isn't, the planning just isn't there, the density shouldn't be there, and that's, that's my honest opinion, I love Warrenville, I'm not moving, I'm not threatening to move, but I think we should not move ahead with this at this particular time. Thank you for listening to me tonight, and thank you, I know the council are all good people, and you're going to want to do the right thing to represent us. Thank you.
Bob Seber, and then Katie Alaba?
Bob Seber Albright Court, 30 years ago, this document was sent to every address in Warrenville, the Tiff Times. On the top, it says, "Prepared in Cooperation with the City of Warrenville." On the back, it has return address, the Warrenville Development Limited Partnership, the developer that was designing Cantera. No statement or signature as to who is behind it, but we can see this agreement between the two principals. On its three pages, both sides, talking only about Cantera 30 years ago. It states on the back of the third page, "Years ago, Warrenville City Council approved special development district zoning for the Corey site to, to protect it against piecemeal development, which would be detrimental to the city," detrimental. I think that council was not interested in buildings. That council was interested in a financial plan to benefit the Warrenville taxpayers in the future. This Cantera zoning was designed with the agreement of the Warrenville Development Limited Partnership, both groups agreeing what should be done principally not to build buildings, but to build a financial plan for the future of Warrenville.
30 seconds.
In the recent years, this city council has removed some of the more beneficial zoning classifications. This has led to a reduced future taxpayer benefit and an increase in city costs. So the question tonight is, what is your plan to offset cost increases in future revenue reduction?
Time.
And protect the taxpayers?
Katie Alaba, and then Deborah Rannieri?
Good evening. To be honest, I was shocked and kind of appalled last meeting that we discussed this topic. Where the taxpaying revenue, the taxpaying residents were given three minutes, and then the staff who is not taxpaying to Warrenville can give their supposed non-biased opinion. I don't believe that's a non-biased opinion. So I wanted to start with intentions here tonight. The documentation that you have been given is similar to what the mayor referenced in the petitions we provided last meeting, where he questioned the validity based on the information provided on that, that maybe people wouldn't have signed if it had said that there was 98 townhomes, maybe 91 was fine, and not supported by facts. So here's your facts, have you read all 300 and so paperwork documents? Because what those information has provided you by is D.R. Horton, which brings their mass staff, none of those are volunteers, by the way, I'm sure they're all getting paid a significant amount, because that is their intentions, they're not here to make a community, they're here to take their money and run. So are the companies that they hire to make studies, which was reported as 2020, if you look at the documents, page 170 it starts, as a reference, where numbers from 2020 jumped twice by 2023, and some of the accidents that were just reported on the intersections, let alone along those streets. So that is represented by do-dot. So those companies, of course, are hired by D.R. Horton, just keep that in mind. I do also question the quote-unquote "staff recommendation" because I don't know what the point is of a council if you're just going to allow staff to recommend whatever they want. But if you look at the Facebook and you hear the comments in the community, nobody comes to the meetings because it doesn't matter because you don't listen, and that's what that's said. And after we are all gone, that's why you won't have anybody in attendance. While the staff laserhead elsewhere, they're also in it, just like D.R. Horton, they take their salaries, and they have the whole process and purpose of bringing development to Warrenville at any cost. We, the residents, have appointed you, as our alderman, to represent us. Now I highly doubt. What?
30 seconds.
I highly doubt that there have been hundreds of supporters that you've talked to, because I've offered tours of the Galusha neighborhood, but I've not been taken up on that. So think about the documentation you've been given, the bias behind it, who benefits? It's not the residents that appointed you, and that is your duty tonight, is to vote representing them, and otherwise, we already have somebody that will take a place.
Time.
When you're no longer interested in representing the true residents.
Thank you, Deborah Rannieri?
Good evening, everyone. I have more like of an observation after being at the last meeting, and I wrote a statement. Every now and then, I just, I observe the city meetings, want to hear what's voted on, I wonder how many of the alderpeople have engaged with the people they represent. Do you have a newsletter? Do you connect via social media? Do you have coffees? Town halls? There is only one of you that reaches out to us on a fairly regular basis, and he's not my alderman, by the way, and that's JP. Do you even know what the citizens of your town want? Do you believe they want more high-rise buildings? Do you think they might be concerned with the, the large number of vacant commercial buildings? After the last meeting, I left feeling not appreciated as a longtime resident of Warrenville since 1980. What I felt was I was being lectured to, and that many of you know what's best for the citizens. Judy Wilkie decided this was the time and the place to scold those in attendance, because some unknown people said unkind and threatening things to her. Ms. Wilkie, instead of scolding and belittling a whole room full of good citizens, take it up with those people individually. You're not my alderperson, and I didn't deserve your anger, nor did anyone else. Fortunately, we get a chance, a change in coming elections, and I sincerely urge people that love this city to step forward, run for city council, or volunteer for different commissions and activities within the town. In the meantime, dear alderpeople, please listen to your citizens, you can do better than this and regain our trust. Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes Citizens' comments, so official and staff comments from the mayor. I do not have anything to add to this agenda, so we'll move on to Clerk. Treasure?
Last week, I attended an event sponsored by the Conservation Foundation, which was for all elected officials in DuPage County, and they explained some of their interesting programs, one on Nature RX, another on their work with food pantries through the McDonald Farm, and a third one, a program on river and watershed conservation. In particular, guidance on when there's an establishment of a homeowners association, how they can have continued ability to maintain the detention and retention ponds that are part of those homeowners association, and they gave some examples of particular projects that they'd work with that seemed to do that very well. It's important when a homeowners association is established that there be lasting maintenance for the pond maintenance areas, and they estimated $750 per acre is what's needed for maintenance of those, those areas. This is an annual event by the Conservation Foundation, and I recommend other elected officials attend it if time permits.
Thank you, any aldermen? Nothing? Administrator? Then we'll move to the approval of the agenda for the night's meeting. Any items, members? Alderman Widener?
If no one has anything to.
If no one has anything to remove, I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the agenda for the October twentieth, twenty twenty-five city council regular meeting.
Second.
By Alderman Kruckenberg. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Next is some minutes that need approval. Alderman Widener?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the October sixth, twenty twenty-five city council regular meeting and to approve the minutes of the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Public Works and Infrastructure meeting.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Widener, second by Alderman Kruckenberg. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries there as well. Those are approved. Next, we have a consent agenda consisting of a number of items. So bear with me, and I'll read through them and then entertain a motion. First, item A, accept council recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O-2025-47, amending Title III, Chapter twenty-six of the City Code regarding massage establishments. Item B, accept council recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O-2025-48, amending Title III, Chapter two of the City Code regarding liquor licenses. Item C, accept Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O-2025-49, amending the Warrenville zoning ordinance regarding adult daycare centers. Item D, accept Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O-2025-50, approving a special use permit for a planned unit development, certain modifications from the Warrenville zoning ordinance, and a final plan of subdivision for Three South, Seven Two Nine West Avenue. Item E, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O-2025-51, amending City Code to reduce the number of available video game licenses from six to five. Item F, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O-2025-52, approving the purchase of a Bobcat compact track loader from Atlas Bobcat and authorizing the disposition of surplus personal property. Item G, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R-2025-57, approving the purchase of a chassis for a Public Works dump truck from Rush Truck Center in the amount of one hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars. Item H, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R-2025-58, approving change order number one to the professional services contract for financial analysis services with S.B. Friedman Development Advisors LLC for additional development-related analysis services. Item I, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R-2025-59, approving the intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Commerce and economic opportunity for Route Fifty-nine path and sidewalk improvements. Item J, receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission meeting held on September eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Item K, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting held on October ninth, two zero two five. Item L, receive and file report of invoices paid up to October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of fifty-four thousand four hundred one dollars and twelve cents. And last, item M, authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before November third, twenty twenty-five in the amount of four hundred eighty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents. That is the consent agenda. Alderman Widener?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm make a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor Andrew Johnson, the consent agenda as presented by Mayor Andrew Johnson.
Second.
A motion and a second by Alderman Kruckenberg. Any conversation or discussion? Very well, then. We call the roll, please.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
And Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is on the regular agenda. There are four items actually on it, so we'll take the first one first. Would anyone make a motion? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O-2025-53, approving an amendment to the Cantera Development Control Regulations and the Cantera General Site Plan Documents, redesignation of land use, final plan of subdivision, site-specific amendments to the Cantera Development Control Regulations, and major amendment to the final plan of planned unit development for the Maycliff Plan Development and Other Relief, Maycliff Subdivision, Cantera Point Town Homes.
Second.
We have a motion. I didn't hear who made the second. I didn't hear the... Alderman Wilkie made the second. Okay. Any conversation, discussion, questions of staff or others here on the board? Alderman Augustinovich?
So I just want to address something here we often forget in government. Silence is not support. Just because the supporters of this proposal didn't show up doesn't mean they represent some hidden majority. Showing up matters. Speaking up matters. The people that show up in this room are here because they care deeply about our community and what this proposal means, not just for their neighborhoods, their property values, their schools, and their way of life. If this plan was as popular as some claim, where were the people standing in favor of it? I refuse to believe that silence equals consent. What I have seen here is a room that has been full of citizens who are engaged, concerned, and asking this council to listen. And I am going to listen.
Thank you. Alderman? Any other comments? From Alderman on the table? Alderman Ashauer?
As I've said before, I oppose this. I don't want to see any more of our commercial property eroded. We obviously have two groups of people here. We have the people that thought enough to come up, to give up many of their nights to oppose something they think is important in their lives and their area, the community. You know, both sides have selfish motivation. It's just that one side supports the community and the other side supports their pocketbook. I happen to agree with the people in town, so I don't support this.
Other aldermen? Alderman Berry?
Thank you. Well, I guess you all know that I agree with this. I have talked to many people regarding this. I've talked to people that live in that community. I've talked to people that live in my ward. I've talked to people at my church. I've talked to people at the Target. They'll come right up to me and start talking about it. So I've actually taken people because they're not sure of where the development was located because they don't live in that area. So I've driven them actually through that property. And I think that a lot of them have a little bit more information, hopefully, from when they have listened to... And I've told them, they need to go on YouTube. They need to look at the meetings. They need to see what the comments were by the people that live in the area. And they have to make their own decisions. I have made the decision, after many years of being up here, of running for election, having many times had anyone running against me. And at other times, people have run against me. But I need to do what's right for the city of Warrenville. And to me, this is something that's right for the city of Warrenville. I was on the city council in two thousand and five when the developer came forward for the development at the corner of Batavia Road and Warrenville Road. And as you all know, that property is still empty. And it's been twenty years, and the city has not collected any taxes for that property, except for the few that, for when the gas station was there. We've spent a lot of money cleaning the property and because we had several aldermen that just didn't do what they knew was right and voted for that property. And so we've lost a lot because of that because they didn't want to oppose the people that lived in that area and didn't do what was right. So I have to do what's right for the city of Warrenville, and I have to agree to let this development go through. Thank you. And I thank you for all of you coming forward. It's very difficult to come forward and stand up here and tell the community what it is that you think and what you believe. And that's very important for people to do that. And I wish that more people would come to these meetings. It's a little disheartening when people only show up for these kind of controversial issues. I wish that people would show up more often. Thank you.
Other aldermen? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you, Mayor. I said this last time and the time before that I was here, how much your questions and your emails and your input has caused me to think more deeply, to question other people, to be looking up information. It is, as Alderman Berry said, it is always important to have the citizens there, no matter what side of this that you're on. So I want to say that again. I had a gentleman write me this week, and what he said is, "Can you tell me why you're in favor of this Cantera development?" And so I rethink the whole thing again and go through comments I've heard from you, comments I know. And I go through the basic things that I've sort of said before. I think this had to be rezoned residential. It was not going to... Nobody has come forward in twenty years to want to build something, another hotel, or anything. It just isn't the kind of property that's going to work commercially. And I think traffic-wise, it won't. We've talked about the density, and we talked last time we were here, that it's actually, because a property is large, it's a lower density than the other Horton developments in the area or in the other developments in Warrenville. We've talked about the schools. Whether you believe the data or not, there won't be that many students in there. And the schools don't have an objection because for every property in there, they're getting seventy percent of our tax dollars. So they will... They can use that money, but they're not going to be impinged. They're low on their numbers anyway. And the fire department's checked off, and the police is checked off. And somebody mentioned tonight, well, we don't like it. It has flat roof, three-story flat roof. But if you travel around to a lot of our multifamily developments and those in other communities, that's the style that buyers want. Whether me or my generation thinks that's not an attractive style, a lot of these units sell out practically before they even break ground. So it's just an attractive plan for the people that are out there buying multifamily housing. The other thing someone, one of you said tonight was, "Who do you work for?" And I think about that. And I don't know if I call it "work for," but I feel like I represent, I need to listen to Ward Three, you folks, other folks in Ward Three. We have gotten emails, people that are very positive about this development and are concerned about having more people for the businesses so that they can grow and we can get more businesses in Warrenville. And the feedback we get is, "We just don't have enough people. We don't have enough boots on the ground," as you might say. And so I also work, represent, have to think about the rest of Warrenville, the other thirteen, fourteen thousand people that are out there concerned about our work and keeping our taxes under the tax cap and the creative ideas we have to find to pay this twenty million dollars for our sewer commitment to Naperville or other expenses that every municipality has that go up every year. And the last thing, actually, was something Bob Seabird said tonight. And he said, "What plan do you have to protect taxpayers?" And he addressed it probably to this council. And that made me think, well, I do have a responsibility. I just mentioned it. But I have to really think about having plans, having ways to have money, creative ways. It's not just property tax. It's all the use taxes. It's all the gas taxes. It's all everything. And I have to think about that in every decision. So to answer that original gentleman's question, that's why I am in favor of this development. I think there's not going to be any other kind of development. Commercial will bring so much traffic. And I do want to say to you that if this residential development creates traffic issues, be it speeding, be it people parking in your area for some reason, or whatever's going on, the city always addresses that. We look with the police department and Public Works. And if it turns out there's an issue regarding that, we will be bringing that up at city council. So I know you probably don't like that I'm voting yes, but I still feel that even with that vote that I represent you and I'm going to be on it if anything is wrong in that development. I was concerned last time about they were going to cut down the trees that will be bit, you know, as they grow, will be a border around that property, attractive border. I didn't want to see those come down. And the gentleman from Horton got up and assured us of that. So that's... I'm going to stop now. But those are the thoughts that have been generated by your questions. And so I hope you continue to stay active in civic issues and you continue to let people know, the city know what you're thinking and feeling so we can make things better. So thank you.
Other aldermen? Anyone? We have a motion and a second on the floor. If you would call the roll, please. Thank you.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Nay.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Nay.
And Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Nay.
Thank you.
So the motion carries. So the next item on our agenda is item B. Anyone care to make a motion regarding that? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, pass resolution R-2025-60, waiving competitive bidding and ratifying the lease of a two thousand twenty-six Ford E-350 cutaway and the procurement of upfitting services and equipment through the Enterprise Fleet Maintenance Program.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Lockett, second by Alderman Wilkie. Any conversation, discussion, questions? Will you call the roll, please?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
And Mayor?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item... Next item? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R-2025-61, waiving competitive bidding and approving the lease of two two thousand twenty-six Ford Police Interceptors through the Enterprise Fleet Management Program.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Lockett, second by Alderman Wilkie. Any discussion? Alderman Lockett?
I just want to make a comment. I remember when we were doing the fleet management stuff prior to us switching to that. And one of our biggest kind of wants, right, which we could not get, was to have, I know we were talking about electric police vehicles, whether or not those were efficient, non-efficient, if that really worked for us and what we needed. And I know that we did express that we would be very interested in hybrid. So... And these two are both hybrid, correct? Sorry, Phil.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I just want to say, thank you. I appreciate it. I know it was something that we wanted, so I appreciate you guys looking into that and all the work that you put into it. So thank you.
Chief?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, when it was looked into before was during the COVID situation. And it was very difficult to get any type of vehicle. And the hybrids were pretty much nonexistent for us at the time. That's a big reason why we've had to wait, you know, a few years to get to this point. So...
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, so any further conversation? Will you call the roll, please?
Alderman Widener? Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Crockenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
And Mayor.
Aye. Motion carries. And the last item. Alderman?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2025-62, waiving competitive bidding and approving change order number one to the contract with Geneva Construction for additional sidewalk work at Leon Schmidt Heritage Park for the pop-up shop market.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Lockett, second by Alderman Wilkie. Any discussion? Will you call the roll, please?
Alderman Crockenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
And Mayor.
Aye. Motion carries. So that concludes our agenda for the evening. We have no unfinished business or new business planned, so we do have closed session need, though. Alderman Berry?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for 5 ILCS 120/2, Pren C, Pren 11, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent. And 5 ILCS 120/2, Pren C, Pren 6, the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body.
Second.
A move by Alderman Berry, second by Alderman Wilkie. Would you call the roll, please?
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Crockenburg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. So we are adjourned into closed session. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming this evening. We'll see you in a week or two. Thank you.